The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our
Okay, can we please start with a roll call?
Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
And Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. And tonight, we're going to start off with a public hearing for the mid-biennium budget adjustment, and it's the second one, and it'll be.
Yes, thank you. My name is Carrie Roller. I'm the Finance Administrator. The city is required to hold public hearings prior to the adoption of the mid-biennial budget and the setting of the upcoming property tax rate for the upcoming year. The first public hearing was last Monday, October 16th, and tonight represents the second and final public hearing. All of our public hearings have been properly noticed and provide opportunity for stakeholders to provide their input. The details of the proposed mid-biennium update, including the 2024 property tax assessment, have been discussed with council, and any updates, any updated figures will be presented to the Committee of the Whole on the November 6th before final adoption. And with that, I will turn it back over to you for the public hearing.
All right, thank you. So we do have somebody signed up to speak to the public hearing. When I call your name, please step up to the podium, and you'll have three minutes or the timer in front of you. I probably don't need to explain this to Diane Dobson.
Good evening, Council Administration and community members. I'm Diane Dobson, resident of Renton and CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce, which serves our Renton, greater Renton business community, both for profit and nonprofit alike. I stand before you today to express some concerns, and I'm hesitant to use the word concern as opposed to feedback for consideration. The staff has done a wonderful and thoughtful job in creating a biennial budget proposal based upon council feedback and administration recommendation. I'm not a numbers person, so the work that staff does, especially in finance, not only makes my head spin, but generates true appreciation and gratitude for the work that they do. First, I want to commend our administration for their exceptional work during the pandemic. They were able to reduce expenses and streamline programming during the pandemic despite the challenges we all faced. And while we did experience a loss of public sector revenues, the proactive approach taken by our administration during that time undoubtedly lessened the impact on our city's general fund, as we all regularly celebrated during economic updates over the past few years. So yay and go team. So coming in at the 11th hour, sorry, team finance, the current proposal suggests various allocations for the $2.6 million surplus budget, or surplus ARPA funding, and I kindly request the council's careful consideration of the following points. $1 million is for sidewalk improvements. While we all agree that sidewalk improvements are necessary, it's worth noting that we recently passed a transportation improvement district proposal without any notable opposition from the the community or business sector. This proposal was touted to help fund sidewalk repairs and maintenance and improvements. Therefore, it seems somewhat redundant to allocate an additional $1 million for this purpose. Various citywide cleanup and SEPT ed improvement, I would like to request clarification on the breakdown of the $500,000 designated for citywide cleanup and the $251,000 allocated for SEPT ed improvement. Understanding how these funds will be used is an essential part of transparency and accountability. $525,000 proposed funding for the Human Services Budget. Recent developments in our community have highlighted the pressing need for more funding for human services. We've recently lost the Reach Meal Coalition due to the lack of suitable venue to host daily meals. Additionally, Sustainable Renton is closing its doors due to a lack of funding and leadership, even though they have consistently served over 150 vehicles every week, providing crucial support to those in need. With the loss of these vital community meal programs, I urge the council to consider allocating more funding toward human services, particularly for addressing food insecurities. Furthermore, I'm aware that some service agencies that benefit Renton have the capacity to distribute additional rental assistant benefits to families in our area if provided with the necessary funding. The challenge of distributing rental support funds can be attributed to many agencies' limited resources and capacities. In addition to this, I would like to encourage the council to consider another round of small business funding. Despite receiving nearly $25 million in support between the CARES and ARPA funding programs, only $1.6 million was distributed to businesses in the initial rounds of CARES funding out of 250 grants. Similarly, only 308,000 of the ARPA funds were allocated specifically to 42 downtown businesses affected by construction delays. It's crucial to remember that we have nearly 5,000 business licenses issued in the city of Renton. Even if we generously assume that the CARES and ARPA businesses were different, though there I know of some overlap, this means that only 292 businesses received any business support. This represents less than 6% of our licensed businesses, all of whom who have endured the challenges of both the global health and economic crisis. Communities like our neighbors in Redmond are taking additional measures to support their local businesses by making grants available currently up to $5,000 per distribution. It's clear that businesses are still grappling with the economic repercussions of the pandemic, especially in the context of ongoing economic uncertainty. Lastly, it's important to note that our citywide BNO taxes have decreased, underscoring the lack of consumer confidence in local spending. This further emphasizes the need for additional support to reinvigorate our local economy. In conclusion, I respectfully request the council reevaluate the allocation of our ARPA funds. By addressing the aforementioned concerns, we can ensure that our community receives the support it needs during these challenging times. Let's work together to make Renton an even more resilient and thriving place to call home. Thank you for your time and attention.
You. All right, we don't have anyone signed up. Is there any correspondence?
There was no correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, the hearing is closed. All right, we are on next to administrative report.
Good evening. The Washington Department of Transportation, WASDOT, will begin work to replace the northern portion of the Lind Avenue overpass, which was damaged in June 2022. To prepare for this repair, WASDOT has planned two overnight closures. On Monday, October 23rd, from 11:00 PM to 4:30 AM, I-405 southbound lanes will be closed with traffic detouring via the State Route 167 interchange, Rayner Avenue, and Grady Way. On Tuesday, October 24th, from 11:00 PM to 4:30 AM, the I-405 northbound lanes closure will only require people to use the I-405 State Route 167 collector-distributor ramp to continue north on I-405. Additionally, there will be a weekend-long closure from 11:00 PM Friday, November 3rd, through 4:30 AM Monday, November 6th. Traffic will detour via State Route 515, Talbot Road, and Grady Way. If work finishes early, southbound I-405 will reopen as soon as possible. This is the only weekend-long closure planned for this project. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at our website at rentonwa.gov. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That's all, sir.
All right, thank you. So next up is the audience comment, and we do have a few people signed up. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. There's a timer rate in front. When the timer starts turning to yellow, please start wrapping up your comments. The first person is John Scheller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. John Scheller, King County Library System. And I'm here to let you know that the King County Library System's annual patron satisfaction survey is now open. It's available from the landing page at kcls.org. There's a blue ribbon along the top that says, "We want to hear from you." This is an annual process that the library conducts. It was disrupted by COVID, so this is our first survey since 2019. During the state mandated closure and the slow reopening, we heard loud and clear that our patrons wanted more open hours. So that was the focus. We have since expanded our open hours by 26%. Renton Highlands Library is open Monday through Saturday, and Renton Library is open seven days per week. So now we want to get back to focusing on the programs and services. So any input that you care to share would be greatly appreciated. And if you cared to share that through newsletters or your social media, that would also be very much appreciated. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Kayla Sambalay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councils. Thank you for having us here today. I represent the United Communities of Laos. We're a coalition that has five nonprofit organizations from different local nonprofit here, representing the Mung, Khmoo, and Lao community in Washington. So we serve over 20,000 people here in King County, Snohomish, Pierce County, and throughout Washington. The reason we're here tonight is really to ask for additional space so that our organization can use to do our nonprofit and serving the communities that are underserved. Just a little bit about our mission here for United Communities of Laos. We assist diverse refugee immigrants, limited English and low-income US-born families in achieving long-term financial and social service efficiency. We also, our goal is to unite and strengthen the community of Laos here, and to foster new community leaders and induce community involvement, and also to promote education, cultural events, and preserve the Lao ethnic culture. A little bit about our background and who we are, the Lao communities. We came here to the United States in the late 70s and early 80s. We fled the war, the secret war that happened in Laos in the 1960s and 70s, where our soldiers were helping Americans to rescue down American pilots from behind enemy lines in Laos. And a lot of us have left Laos as refugees with with nothing, with basically just families and a journey here to America to find safety. So our organization, I represent the Lao organization, which is Lao Community Service Center and Baum Foundation and Lao Women Association of Washington. We've been an org here for, Baum Foundation has been an org here for over 14 years. We have a cultural genesis for kids to preserve our culture. We use other community places to to do this. We don't have a space. We need a space to provide these type of services for our community. Like, the Lao Community Service Center also serviced the Lao elderly and families that needs. During COVID-19, we gave out food. We use the community centers here to to partner and give out foods to our community. We did COVID-19 pop-ups, but we don't have a place. We're working out of our own home, and we're asking the city, if you have a space, anything available for us, even just to hang our name or just an address that we can use so that we can better serve our community. And I have with me here my community, so we're all here together to to ask that that we have we have a space that our youth and our families and our elders can use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next person signed up is Kua Franz.
The Franz. Thank you. Hello, City Council members. My name is Kua Franz, and I'm the Board President at Mung Association of Washington, also known as HAW. That's spelled H-A-W. I also have a Vice President, Asia Lor, in the audience with me today, as well as some of our members calling in from Zoom. HAW was established 40 years ago in the state of Washington to support the needs of the newly arrived Mung refugee families. Mung families are very similar to my own. I was born in a Thai refugee camp because of the war that my colleague has spoke about. I was only two when my family and I came to the United States in the early 80s. Today, HAW's mission is to preserve and promote our Mung culture, advocate for the Mung community, and educate others about our history, challenges, and the different ways in which we build community. Currently, there are about 2,700 Mung residents living in Washington. Through our organization, with limited capacity, we provide effective services and programs that improve the life of our diverse Mung communities. We have programs and opportunities that support our youth, family, elders, small business owners, and professionals. The majority of our findings do come from local and state grants. Tonight, I'm here representing one of the founding organizations supporting United Community of Laos to show our support for their requests for additional resources, particularly to support the Lao, Mung, and Khmoo community, and also to ask for a creation of a community space or a center where all three communities can come together and find a sense of belonging, a place where services can be provided seamlessly, and so that our families can also thrive. I invite you to also join us as we're developing different strategies and how we can actually approach this. So I again welcome your suggestions and your partnership, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Tracy Friedman.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Tracy Friedman, and I am one of the three leads for United Community of Laos. I am a Khmoo person, and like many of us, we wear multiple hats. And so during the evening and weekends, I work to support Khmoo communities, and we're South Seattle and Renton. So Khmoo is a very small tribe from Laos, and but we have our own ethnic, ethnicity, language, and culture, and food. And because we're a small group, we wanted to make sure that we get seen and be heard. And so as a result, we formed and joined the coalition, the United Community of Laos. We have been resourceful. We've, you know, with our programs throughout COVID, we've used the libraries, we've used partnership with King County Parks, and use public spaces. It's just really difficult for us because when we have small gathering or events, our people come, and they come in groups because of COVID. Now that things are opening up, we just do not have the ability to coordinate, and and the community spaces that are available are not open to us. And so we're looking, and I want to be creative, continue to be creative, and partner with the city and help us identify space, you know, for us to meet regularly, and and also for us to continue to look and leverage partners to find money so that we can build our community center. So the purpose of the community center is originally why we all got together, is to bring our communities together and and have programs and services underneath there, but also to share and show our culture and the diversity that we have within people from Laos, as well as Renton, and other members that we want to share our culture and language. So so far, we've done the vaccination, you know, food distribution, anti-hate, anti-Asian trainings, bystander trainings, gardening projects. All these things take time and resource, and we all work part-time, you know, after our job to help and keep our community engaged and involved. And so we appreciate your commitment and support because as we move forward to our next steps. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And next up is Jack Skeel.
Hello, and good evening, council. My name is Jack Skeel, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Long Acres DIY Skate Spot. I really enjoyed speaking with a few of you after last week's meeting, and I wanted to come back tonight to reiterate how important this skatepark is to our community and to the people who use it. Because after the last five years of trying to navigate a fair lease agreement with WASDOT, we have exhausted all of our efforts, and that's why I continue to come here and ask for help. During our conversation, Mayor Pavone had some promising ideas on potential ways to incorporate the skatepark into new developments that are taking place at the old Boeing Long Acres facility, and we're open to any avenue possible that could potentially save this space. I emailed a few of you electronic versions of WASDOT's lease agreement for the property if anyone is interested in reading it. I can set you up with our contact at WASDOT, Dorothy Miller, the Head of Northwest Region Real Estate Services, who is in charge of putting our lease together. I have her information on hand if anyone would like to take it after the meeting. That's all I have to say. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you. And I don't believe we have anybody signed up to speak remotely. So we're on to the consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agenda. Are there any that council would like to pull for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
Hearing none, I move that the council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
I have no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
I have unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
Unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Van.
I have unfinished.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has eight committee reports to present.
Okay, Finance Committee Committee Report. The first is regarding approvals of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable, total payment of $10,764,753.84 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and a wire transfer. And then two is payroll, a total payment of $1,872,525.48 for payroll vouchers, including 667 direct deposits and nine checks. This is for the August 16th through 31st pay period. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding an agreement with Anchor QEA for the May Creek Park Master Plan. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Anchor QEA in the amount of $149,936 for the May Creek Park Master Plan project. The Anchor QEA scope of services includes a fee proposal in the amount of $149,936. Funding for this work has been budgeted in Fund May Creek Park. The funding source is Fund 303, the Park's Impact Mitigation Fund. The fund can only be used for projects that create new capacity, and the proposed project aligns with the fund's intended use. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the renewal of our Healthcare Management Administrators Agreement for 2024. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to renew the Healthcare Management Administrators Agreement and 2024 administrative fee rates. The total cost for HMA's administrative services is increasing by 4.60% for 2024 and will be $44.78 per employee per month. The HMA fee increase in 2023 was 3.60%. Enrollment varies during the year and is approximately 650. 575 active members and 65 retirees. The cost of 650 enrolled times 44.78 per month times 12 months is $349,284. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding an approval of the Kaiser Permanente Healthcare Premium Rates for 2024. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2024 Kaiser Healthcare Premium Rates for active employees and retirees. Kaiser's premium rates are increasing 7.01% for active employees, with a slight decrease for left one retirees with Medicare coverage. This increase for active employees is up from 5.82% in 2023, but compares favorably overall to premium rate increases within the industry. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the renewal of the Symetra Stop Loss Coverage for 2024. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to renew the 2024 Stop Loss Excess Loss Insurance Contract with Symetra and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the implementing documents when they're ready. The competitive bids for coverage in 2024 resulted in Symetra giving the city a rate pass, which means there is no increase in premium rates for 2024. This is favorable for the city as the industry trend for excess coverage renewal rates is between 15% to 20%. The coverage carries an individual deductible amount of $250,000, which will remain unchanged from last year. This too is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor. I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the renewal of standard life and long-term disability insurance for 2024. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to renew the city's life insurance and long-term disability insurance coverage for employees with standard life at a reduced premium rate guaranteed through 2026. The rate reduction for life insurance premium is negative 16.26%, and the reduction for long-term disability is negative 17.24%. These rates are guaranteed for three years through 2026. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding an Emergency Management Performance Grant Award Obligation. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 23 EMPG Emergency Management Performance Grant Award Obligation Letter and accept the award in the amount of $58,285. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final report from the Finance Committee is regarding an interagency agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission for the Safer Access to Neighborhood Destinations Grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the interagency agreement with Washington Traffic Safety Commission for the obligation of grant funding in the amount of $182,700 for the Safer Access to Neighborhood Destinations Traffic Safety Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Alberston, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. All right, Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. After finance, I. The Planning and Development Committee has three committee reports.
Okay, the first Planning and Development Committee Committee Report is regarding 2023 Title IV Docket 18 Group D. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the 2023 Title IV Docket 18 Group D Item, Docket 231, which is code interpretations. The Committee further recommends that an ordinance for this item be prepared and presented for first reading. When it is complete, this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Prince.
I move that the council, the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
All right, the next Planning and Development Committee Report is regarding the is regarding the 2021 Construction and Administrative Code with Local Amendments Adoption, which is Docket Number D-232. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt state-mandated updates to the city's construction code, international building code, with optional appendix T solar-ready provisions for one- and two-family dwelling units. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that a resolution for this item be prepared and presented for adoption when it is complete. I believe that should be an ordinance.
I believe so as well.
This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
All right, the final report from the Planning and Development Committee is regarding the Clean Economy Strategy CES 2.0. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the Clean Economy Strategy CES 2.0. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that a resolution for this item be prepared and presented for adoption when it is complete. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
I move that council concur at the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we are done with unfinished business. We're moving on to legislation in big red letters that says "none." So we're going to move on to new business, and we're going to start with Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, October 30th, 2023, there will be no meetings because that is the fifth Monday of the month, and we don't meet on the fifth Mondays of the month. Then on Monday, November 6th, 2023, at 5:45 PM, the committee of the whole will be meeting here in chambers and via video conference. We have one item on the topic of mid-biennial budget. And then on Monday, November 6th, at 2023, at 7:00 PM, the regularly scheduled council meeting will be held here in chambers and via video conference. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee will be meeting on Monday, November 6th, at 4:00 PM, either in the council conference room or via video conference. We have three items on the agenda. The first will be the severe weather shelter update, the recreation divisions updates, and the EHHS professional services contract updates. And, Mr. Mayor, I do have one more item of new business.
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you. Hearing the concerns from community regarding reach, sustainability Renton, and our most recent commenters from the United Communities of Laos, I would like to motion for city staff to identify any surplus city-owned spaces that we can offer for our community, just in general.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that staff identify any surplus spaces to be used by the public. In discussion. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember Alberston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, November 6th, at 3:00 PM, the Utilities Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. Three items on the agenda. Number one, agreement with Corolo Engineers Incorporated for Kennydale Lakeline Sewer Systems Improvements Final Design. Number two, agreement with Jacobs Engineering Incorporated for Ginger Creek and Honey Creek Sub Basin Plans. And number three, emerging issues in utilities, specifically Google Fiber Proposal. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff will be providing property tax and budget-related legislation in the package for the November 6th council meeting. The current budget calendar anticipates a November 6th Committee of the Whole meeting to discuss budget legislation and first reading of the tax and budget ordinance that same night. I understand that the budget legislation will include changes to the salary table, including compensation changes relating to staff reclassifications that the Finance Committee has not previously discussed. In the past, staff salaries and reclassifications have been reviewed by the Finance Committee prior to approval by the council. I propose that the council refer consideration of the budget-related legislation to the November 13 Finance Committee prior to the first reading. The property tax levy can still be scheduled for first reading on November 6th. I have talked with Kerry and the president of the council about this change in the calendar, and the change in timing will not prevent us from meeting any required deadlines. Therefore, I move to schedule first reading of the budget-related legislatures to take place after review or recommendation by the Finance Committee. The property tax levy should remain scheduled for first reading on November 6th with any changes to numbers previously presented explained in a November 6th Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Council President O'Halloran, and the motion is to schedule first reading of the budget-related legislation to take place after review and recommendation by the Finance Committee. The property tax levy should remain scheduled for the first reading on November 6th with any changes to numbers previously presented explained in a November 6th Committee of the Whole in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember Prince.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, November 6th, at 5:00 PM. There's two items on the agenda, a meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. The two items are 68 closure of Sunset Boulevard Northeast, and then emerging issues in transportation, specifically an update on the Renton Municipal Airport. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what's the wish of the council?
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose, say no. We are adjourned.